All right, good evening. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for January 22nd. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly, Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Pallavani-Glu.
Present.
Councilmember Statifor.
Present.
There are eight members present in quorum. To the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Does anybody have someone they would like to be remembered at this time? All right, seeing none, okay, we will rise to for a moment in meditation followed by the pledge of allegiance.
You have your approval of the printed council proceedings of January 3rd.
All right, Vice President Hussein.
Sure, I would move the printed council proceedings from January 3rd as presented.
Okay, we got a motion in place. If they have any questions or concerns. Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes.
And we are to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
Do we have any comments by councilmembers? All right, Councilman Jackson, followed by Brown.
Thank you, two comments. First is that we are postponing our fourth ward constituent contact meeting, canceling this month in January. It would be the fourth Saturday of the month, but my daughter has a floor hockey tournament that I want to go to and take her to. So we're going to do that. And the other announcement is for anybody that's interested in the ceasefire resolution that's been talked about and brought forward. We will have that on the committee agenda for equity, diversity, and inclusion for this Wednesday at 4:30 here. It's on the agenda for discussion. So if you want to come, that'll be a time. And if not, you can speak now or keep sending emails and we'll take everything that we hear. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman, Councilman Brown.
Thank you, President Garza. I just wanted to extend my apologies. On our last meeting, I was reading the wrong resolution to the MLK Holiday Luncheon Committee. So just wanted to extend that it was a wonderful event and was so glad that I had the opportunity to participate. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Hussein.
Yep, so I want to announce again the rejuvenating South Lansing meeting that will take place tomorrow at 6:30 PM. That is at 5825 Wise Road in the Sandy Allen Room. So it's the South Side Community Center in the Sandy Allen Room, right off the parking lot. We have facilitators, if you're missing Carol Wood. She is one of the facilitators for 2024 of RSL, as well as, you know, true South Lansing champion in Jason Wilks. So they'll facilitate the meeting. Guest speaker will actually be President Garza, who will speak to leadership, will speak to some of the important issues that are forthcoming with regard to council's agenda, committee structure, and the like. So certainly would love to see you all out at tomorrow's RSL meeting against 6:30 PM. The other piece is, we believe it or not, don't have another council meeting until February 12th. So I am going to announce our next constituent contact meeting for the third ward, which is February 10th, the second Saturday in February. That would take place at 10 o'clock sharp at 5825 Wise Road, in the same room that we meet for the rejuvenating South Lansing meetings. So again, that is February 10th, 10 to 12 noon, and that is the third ward constituent contact meeting. You do not have to be a third ward resident to attend. We do kind of hyper-focus on South Lansing issues, but we also talk about issues affecting the broader community. So we'd love to see you there. Thank you.
Any other comments by councilmembers? Seeing none, City Clerk?
Thank you, just a couple of things with regards to the upcoming Charter Commission election. We saw a ballooning of the number of candidates. We had eight people filed today, so we're up to 25 candidates. Tomorrow at 4:00 PM is the filing deadline. So if you wish to file for that, just come to my office at 1221 Rio Road or here on the ninth floor of City Hall. It is a $100 filing fee. I don't think anyone would have time to collect 400 signatures as the alternate, so the $100 filing fee you need to bring with you. And there's some paperwork, so it can all be done in one visit here. And again, the deadline is four o'clock tomorrow. Also, with regards to the upcoming presidential primary election, that election date is February 27th. Michigan does require voters to select whether they want a Democratic or Republican ballot. And so we do have a lot of people who are on our permanent mail ballot list, but have not selected a ballot for this primary. Actually, several thousand people who are on the list to get an automatic ballot, but need to make a ballot selection. So we are working on making reminders to those people individually. So we cannot send a ballot until we have a selection of your political party, which ballot you want. It doesn't tie you to anything in the future. It's just which ballot do you want for this upcoming presidential primary? And with that, we are to community event announcements. If anyone in the audience has a community event, we'll give you one minute to tell us the details of your event. You can just step up to the lectern.
The local, I'm Norma Bauer. The local chapter of Nation Outside is going to meet every third Thursday at 5:00 PM at the Neighborhood Empowerment Center. And I encourage all of you who know someone who's been negatively impacted by our criminal justice system to attend the meeting because we do a lot of good things. There are people who are returning citizens and they have transitioned to a law-abiding lifestyle. And they do peer coaching and they encourage advocates like me. I have a family member who was negatively impacted by a criminal justice system. And we can approach landlords and encourage them to implement fair chance housing, which means don't ask them about their criminal history because it has nothing to do with whether they'll be good tenants or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with a community event announcement? All right, seeing no one else then, I will announce that if you wish to, we only have two items that are legislative matters on the agenda today. Items two and three on the printed agenda. If you wish to address the council on either of those two items, I will give you about another minute to sign up with Anna in the back. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Shor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few quick things and then I wanted to let you all know, we submitted our annual report, which is in your packet. First, we have a few grants that were submitted, so I wanted to give you a heads up. Firehouse Subs has a grant, so the Lansing Fire Department has submitted a grant request for that. We have a community diversity program, which our HRCS has applied for, and we have applied for a MISTDA zoning and planning grant for housing. So if we get them, they'll come your way, but wanted to give you guys a heads up. On the facade front, the Sunset Market downtown is done between Pennsylvania and Cedar over by Arts Bar, so check that out. It's a win for our facade program. On the Code Blue front, I want to thank everybody for all their help and assistance with Code Blue. I know I heard from several councilmembers, Hussein, Garza, Cost. We tried to navigate all of that and I appreciate working with all of you. So if anyone else, if you hear anything, please feel free to let me know, let any of our folks know, any of our directors. But the Code Blue is still in effect until tomorrow at 5:00. We're hoping that it really will be 31 degrees tomorrow, so everything will melt. If the snow kind of fluffs up, is what I was told, then we will go through and do a plow. If it melts and drains, then we won't have to, but our folks are certainly on top of that. And then I wanted to let folks know that we had our first contract where a Lansing company came in second, but they were within 10% and they agreed to match the out-of-town bidder. And so that's a win. We will, I know several councilmembers here, we worked on that together to make sure that our local folks were bidding and winning bids, so that's a win. In your packet is our 150-page annual report. I hope you'll all take a look at it. Some quick highlights and then I'll be done. For our assessing, we had $3.6 billion in property assessed. Our folks determined more than 45,000 real and personal property parcels. They visited 14,000 properties. So significant work there. For our neighborhoods department, $150,000 in neighborhood grants, 250 neighborhood in bloom kits assembled, 2,000 subscribers to our newsletter, 55 community events. I could go on. For our building safety, 10,000 permits issued, almost 2,000 project plan reviews, 14,500 inspections conducted. We had $126.4 million in city project construction value. Our code enforcement had 22,300 violation and inspection notices. We had 4,800 rental certification inspections representing more than 9,400 dwelling units. We had over 30,000 residential smoke alarms tested. So our neat team is actively monitoring more than, almost 500 unsafe properties requiring exterior inspections. Our code secured 437 open and accessible structures. We had 4,520 tall grass and weed inspections with 938 abatement notices. So these are all in the report. What other highlights? We had tons. Our fire department at 22,734 runs with an average of 70 runs per day. 19,655 of those were EMS runs. They did 62 community safety presentations, reaching almost 3,000 people. They did fire inspection presentations, building safety, drills, training. Our HRCS, our Human Relations and Community Service, gave $1.6 million in grants to 53 agencies. They spent $350,000 or so to address urgent community needs like senior services and a variety of others. Our HR employed 279 employees were hired. They ratified the firefighter and teamsters agreements. Our IT had over 9,600 tickets open and closed, which is impressive. Our public media center had more than 300 engagements in studio space and checking out video equipment. Our city attorney's office had about 350 contracts drafted and 317 resolutions and ordinances, 580 FOIA requests. They prosecuted 375 court-ordered compliance cases for code, building safety, and fire. Our parks and rec put in 13 new play equipments in parks. New safety engineered wood fiber installed at 376 playgrounds, a new pool liner at Hunter Park Pool, 70 kids at each site for summer camp, 600 cars at the drive-through Halloween. I'm almost out, I promise. LPD had more than 116 illegal firearms taken off the street, something like 100,000 calls, 800 hours of violent crime initiative hotspot policing, and over 127 arrests. Our public service had tons of stuff. So hopefully you'll check out public service, over 1,500 miles of streets, sidewalks, sewers, and paths. Maintained 4.4 billion gallons of wastewater from over 38,000 customers, 77 catch basins cleaned, 1,316 potholes reported, and over 800 tons of patch material used to fill them, a variety of others. Treasury collected over 180 million in property taxes and 43.7 million in income taxes. So our city is doing a lot of work. And again, I hope you'll take a look at the 150-page annual report. There's just a ton going on. Sorry, Mr. Clerk, I missed many of your things, but I know you report them individually on your own and certainly city council has many things they're doing as well. So real proud of the work that our folks did last year in 2023 and will continue to do that in 2024. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor Shor. I appreciate that. And, you know, I guess I got a couple of comments, something that brought to my attention when you were going through your list. One being, we had a good presentation here from Jake Brower from Finance. When we talk about all the different runs and call volume that the fire department had, I hope that we are actively engaging in trying to hire paramedics. I know that is something that we seriously need in the city.
And that's exactly, the presentation that Jake gave, the money that you had actually put in the amendment for last year, for our firefighters, that is going towards paramedics. That is exactly what it's going towards, trying to get our EMTs the support they need to become paramedics, to hire paramedics. So we're not doing specifically bonuses for firefighters, we're doing paramedic work. And that's what the chief and the IAFF have talked about as the biggest need. So again, the language that you supported, that you sponsored last year is going specifically towards recruitment and training of paramedics because we are desperately in need of paramedics. It's a great point.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And just something, you know, I know we don't have any jurisdiction over Lansing School District, but something that was brought to my attention, I just wanted to bring it to your attention today, Mayor, that there's a family that lives in Colonial Village area and her kids, last week, two different occasions during Code Blue. And that's why I think maybe we could get with Lansing School District and CADA, kind of, when there is Code Blue instances. What happened to this particular family is that when the kids were waiting for the bus, there was a big group of kids and only a handful of kids were able to get on the bus because they were at capacity. So...
The bus was at capacity?
The bus was at capacity, according to this individual that told me today. And it happened two different occasions. So I'm hopeful that CADA has a plan in place moving forward to where we're not leaving our kids out on the street in the cold, especially during Code Blue.
I'll make sure to send that on to the superintendent.
Thank you, and I plan on following up with them today. It's something I just talked to them about. I talked to other colleagues about this earlier today, but it's just something that I would hope that we could have a plan in place moving forward.
Appreciate that, hadn't heard that, I appreciate that and I'll stand with you on this.
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters. And again, that's items two and three on the agenda, and our speaker is Norma Bauer.
I'm still Norma Bauer. And I want to know if the 3-1-1 operators will be able to find the new committee structures and the time and place of those meetings and which council members are assigned to which committee. I can go out in the lobby here and take a picture of the ones that are posted on the bulletin board, so I will know if I don't lose them. There are other citizen activists who have a very high degree of interest in committee work because a lot of work is done in committees, as you all know and as I know from having attended the committee on homelessness or something. And so I appreciate the work that's done in committees. And if we have 25 candidates who want to serve on the city charter review commission, I would hope that some of those 25 people would want to go and find out what happens at committee meetings where so much work is done. So I really hope that you'll make that information available before each meeting. So the 3-1-1, because we count on those 3-1-1 operators. And sometimes you say you want to give a feedback and it doesn't let you get the feedback. So just a heads up and a request of city administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bauer. Oh, one second, Mr. Clerk. Ms. Bauer, that is on our website, just so you, I wanted to let you know the committee meetings are on our website, the city council website.
It's a matter of finding them.
Okay. And do we have something from Executive Assistant, Mark Lawrence?
Just that I'll make sure our 3-1-1 operators have that information. That's kind of the nice part about this system is it's ever-evolving, so we can keep feeding them that information and they'll have it.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, we are to the consent agenda.
Vice President Hussein.
All right, we have two items tonight on the consent agenda. The first is the elected officers' compensation commission or the resolution that deals with setting the first meeting for the 2024 session. And that, per resolution, would be set Tuesday 6th, sorry, 12:00 noon, 10th floor of City Hall. And then the second resolution we have deals with the meeting schedule, city council meeting schedule for 2024. And this is a resolution to amend. And just very quickly, Mark, just so the folks at 3-1-1 do know, not only do we have our council committee assignments up there, but we have committee structure. We have meetings, we have all of those things. We also put a weekly meeting schedule up there as well. And so that is, I think, incredibly resourceful. With that being said, I would move the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any questions or concerns? All right, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, motion passes.
Okay, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. So we'll give you about another minute to sign in with Anna on a yellow sheet if you wish to address counsel on any city government-related matter. And with that, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure, I would move that all items be considered as being read in full and that the appropriate referrals be made by you, President Garza.
All right, thank you. We have a proper motion in place. Any questions or concerns? All right, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? All right, motion passes.
Okay, we have items from the clerk, minutes of boards and commissions.
Place and file.
And Charter Commission, meeting location, and per diem rate.
Committee of the whole.
Items from the mayor, we have two items relative to orders to make safer, demolish to the owners of 1326 North Genesee Avenue.
Public safety.
Two items relative to brownfield plan number 77, amendment number one, the 500-block redevelopment project.
Development and planning.
Grant acceptance revitalization and place-making grant, amendment one.
Ways and Means and internal auditor.
Workers, we have two workers' compensation settlements.
And those will go to the Ways and Means and internal auditor.
We have the City of Lansing 2023 Annual Report.
Committee of the whole.
Sole source, we have two sole source purchases. One is for Public Service Department request for Kennedy Industries as the vendor for flight vertical dry pit sewage pump. And the other is a Finance Department request for Plant Moran as the vendor for federal e-filing and print mail services.
Ways and Means and internal auditor.
Communications and petitions, we have a notice from Liquor Control Commission, Vice Convenience LLC transferring ownership at 1826 South Cedar.
That would be city operations.
And a claim appeal, claim 2018 for $1,375 in trash fees at 1213 West Ottawa.
City operation.
And we are to remarks by councilmembers.
Any further remarks by councilmembers? Seeing none.
All right, we are to public comment on city government-related matters. Speakers have up to three minutes to address city council. And our first speaker is Sharla Burnett, followed by Laura Schmidt.
Hi, it's been a while since I've seen all you guys. I haven't been coming because I've been a bit disenchanted with our democracy, not just at a local level, but at a federal level. I was born here in Lansing, raised most of my life in the South Side in a trailer park. And as a little girl, I remember seeing images of the Holocaust at the libraries and schools, of the photos of kids' faces sunken in and of all of the photos of the mass graves. That experience forever changed my life because I would grow up to pursue a doctorate degree in logistics and global governance where I would serve the United Nations mission to the West Bank, where for a year during the Gaza War, I was a program specialist and had to drive around in between all of the checkpoints to get to the hospitals and the schools and the different areas of the camps. During my time there, I had to experience a lot of the occupation and that was being stopped with Palestinians for hours at a time to get to and from houses. It was taking a lot of notes of women whose children disappeared in the night when the IDF kicked down their doors. It was a lot of conversations about when there were little boys were going to be released, when they were going to have adequate water because their water was shut off, or a lot of conversations about the settlers who came to burn their olive trees. It came at the expense of me getting shot at multiple times and watching them shoot little kids with rocks in their hands. It didn't take very long for me to recognize that this too was going to be its own ethnic cleansing and genocide, not because of what I witnessed, because of what they told me. Many times I traveled around East Jerusalem and would be stopped by Israelis when I got to the border because they would want to know I was there. And I would tell them I was a tourist because it was quite dangerous for me to tell them what I was doing. They would actually threaten to kill me. But they would always want to tell me that they think we should just kill them all. And so in 2014, when I came back, I knew what the end was going to be and what the result is. Now 28,000 Gazans are dead, 8,000 of which are children. Between 56 to 80% of all of the buildings have been demolished in Gaza. And Benjamin Netanyahu has told us that there is no end result to this casualty, but the end of the Palestinian government. They will continue until everyone is removed from Israel. That is their goal because it's not about being Jewish or about religion, this is about Zionism. This is about the obtaining of land and natural resources and the gas in Gaza. How much longer will it take for us to pass a resolution? You say you don't know why we would at this level of government, but because we can, because it's that easy and because we shouldn't have to wait until after a Holocaust for us to do something about it. Thank you.
Hey, we'll keep decorum here, you guys. It's a time for everybody to speak and want to make sure that everybody has the proper respect, okay? Because not everybody is on the same side of the issue.
Okay, next is Laura Schmidt, followed by Grayson.
All right. Hey, folks, I too am asking for you to support the ceasefire resolution. As mentioned just moments ago, there have been innumerable injustices and crimes against humanity, including the murders of more than 28,000 Palestinians, many of whom are children. We have seen bombing of aid stations and hospitals. There is not adequate care to be able to care for these people. And we see that there is targeting and murdering of press in addition to murdering folks carrying white flags and clearly in not a state to defend themselves. So why here, why now, is that the murders have to stop. They will not stop unless we help them stop. And we have that power in the United States, yet there's been no national leadership taking control of the situation. But the country is created out of states and states are created out of cities. And so we have the power to mobilize cities, as we've seen in other places across Michigan. We can unite and then also create a resolution in the state of Michigan, which then will go up the chain to the nation. I really hope that you folks will consider passing this resolution on a local level, standing for the, or standing against the rampant injustices and the murders of so many people because I can just imagine that one of these people are my children or my brother or my father or my mother. And I hope that you folks can put yourself in the position of the people in Palestine as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Grayson, followed by Nathan Holman.
Hello, council. My name is Grayson Eckland and I've lived in Lansing's second ward for about two years now. Tonight, I just want to talk about my concerns regarding the Michigan Ave redevelopment. As a biker and a runner, I like to use the bike path in the city. I like to use a lot of, I like to not be in my car as much as possible, and that's just me. But I think it's important also to understand my position on why I think we should change the current proposal for the Michigan Ave redevelopment because 100 years ago, Michigan had a streetcar system that carved through the city. You were able to get from the Capitol all the way down to what used to be the Michigan Agricultural College. But now, the only way you can do that is by a bus that comes around every 30-ish minutes, which I think is not adequate enough. So the transit system that we used to have 100 years ago shows that Lansing can create good transit and good places for not just cars, but for people and pedestrians as well. And I think that in the 21st century, we should be able to significantly improve upon what we did 100 years ago. But if that were the case, I wouldn't be voicing my concerns here today. My concerns are essentially that the redesign places too much emphasis on cars and not on people. Because 100 years ago, you didn't think about how many cars went through Michigan Ave. You thought about how many people. But today, we don't think about that. We think of, we remove the human aspect of it, so we're designing our cities around cars instead of people. And I think that's just wrong. Yeah, I understand the concerns regarding feasibility, like we can't rebuild a train down the middle of Michigan Ave as much as I personally would like to. I understand the feasibility, we're on a city council here. But I think that, and I understand the last time that something more progressive was proposed, as at the BRT... proposed, as at the BRT, a few years ago, I understand that that got shut down, and there was a strong opposition against that from the grassroots movement. So I understand the concerns about proposing something that would be a little more than what we're having, but from somebody from the younger generation, I think that, knowing my roommate here, he doesn't have a car. He bikes and walks from the corner of Shiahawasi and Walnut Street, and he walks to McAllister's on Lake Lansing Road. I think that that is something that shouldn't, you shouldn't have to do that. And I think it should be easier for people to walk around the city, which is why I'm calling on the council to please reconsider the proposal for the Michigan Ave, for the Michigan Ave redevelopment. And also, another reason I'm concerning this is that they said that Mr. Kilpatrick said that this would be the design for the next fifteen to twenty years, and I believe that we really, if this is what it's going to be for the next fifteen to twenty years, let's think about climate change. We don't want people to be driving, so why are we accommodating the future of driving when we should be accommodating humans biking, walking, transit? I think these are the things we should be looking for in the 21st century as we face issues related to climate change. And yeah, we don't need, we don't need huge outside powers to come and tell us how to build our city. Let's come together and let's work on how do we accommodate all kinds of traffic instead of just cars. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nathan Hallman, followed by Luna Brown.
Hello, I'm here to talk about the ongoing issues with the Let's Warming Center. A lot of our issues are around kind of a confusion and around transparency about the, about the center. A lot of times, it's just difficult to get information about the center unless you personally visit it yourself. We know that the center had a funding of eight hundred thousand dollars, but we know only about nineteen people have been using it a night. So one of the things we really want to know is just how is that money being spent? It seems like, from what we can tell, it's just basically a gymnasium with a few employees. And that doesn't seem like something that caused eight hundred thousand dollars to run, frankly. We know that the center doesn't have beds, food, showers, or any sort of social services. And I know it's just supposed to be a warming center, not a shelter, but again, if we have been spending all that money, why can't it be more than that? We've seen, I think there was pictures posted this week that, like, there are people just kind of sleeping on, like, metal chairs. So if people are basically using it to sleep, and it's only open at night, again, why can't it have beds? Why do we kind of have to take these half measures where it's open at night and people I kind of are using it to sleep, but not comfortably? We've also heard the restrooms don't seem to be disability-friendly. There's no single-stall restrooms, no gender-neutral restrooms. And yeah, we think we can do better than this. And also, I'd like to also, like the other folks said, voice support for the resolution for ceasefire in Palestine. And that's my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Luna Brown, followed by Thomas Hands.
Hello, I'm not going to repeat too much of what Nathan said. I will add, one of the big issues we've been hearing a lot about with Let's is that it is apparently very cold in there. I don't know who is in charge of the heating, if you guys are paying the electric bill or if it's Let's, but if Let's is renting for you, they're still legally obligated to keep the temperature above a minimum amount and keep it warm in there for the people who are staying there. If it is you guys, you are legally obligated to do so. And yeah, we're going to keep an eye on that situation. We've been looking into all the issues that Let's had, and the biggest problem we've had in general has been the administration's lack of transparency on the entire operation, what's going on inside there. We didn't even hear about it till literally, like, it was about to, like, open. Like, we, we heard about it, like, a month before it officially opened, you know? And then it's been nothing, we've been hearing nothing but complaints since it opened. And again, there's still many people who do not feel safe in the place, and that needs to be corrected. We have staff there for a reason. We shouldn't have people banging down stall doors, like, looking for people doing drugs when, you know, they're just staying in a warming shelter. That's a comment I saw on Facebook from one person who stayed there who no longer feels safe staying there because the staff did nothing about this person barging into stalls. I've also heard rumors of being people, of people being denied access to this place because they couldn't accommodate their disabilities. I do not have any direct proof of that, but there are rumors that have been floating around, and you should be aware of that. And also, we all know there's no gender-neutral bathroom option. Last I heard, the place was separated by gender. I don't know if that is a hundred percent true. Again, some transparency from our administration might help shed some light on these things, but we're receiving nothing. We've had no real conversation with the people in charge of this. The people want to have a real conversation, and you're denying us the opportunity to get to the bottom of the issues that Let's and to try and work towards correcting them. And you need to give us that opportunity. We need to address these problems. You can't just stay silent and not watch as people suffer and the, so what was supposed to be a solution to the suffering has just been problem after problem the entire way. We need to fix that. Thanks. Bye. And free Palestine.
Thank you. Next is Thomas Hands, followed by Norma Bauer.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Tom Hands, born and raised, city of Lansing. Just celebrated my Medicare birthday, so that constitutes that I'm a senior citizen, seasoned citizen, and have some experience about things that have been going on. First and foremost, I do respect your work and the things you're doing. We've come a long ways in areas in our town. But one of the items on my agenda was also the Let's Warming Center, and I do want to address President Garza on the transportation issue. My wife is a bus driver for Dean, and it's kind of hard to believe that they were turned away because of, the bus was full, because a lot of times that she'll get called to go pick up on another route. So I would just like to suggest that maybe you talk to Kelly Dean at Dean Transportation. You want to know what's going on in our school district? Volunteer as a bus monitor and ride on there and see what's going on. We need a lot of work there. But, that being said, I just want to speak up about things that are going on in the the south side where I grew up. I'm overly concerned about the, the area. I'm born and raised on the south side. That area is being targeted due to its social economic status by pot shops, liquor stores, fast food restaurants, check cashing places. We need to build our infrastructure up from the bottom up, and when I say that, I'm talking about its citizens. We have a lot of people living at poverty level on that area town. There's a lack of affordable housing. If I'm wrong on this, I apologize, but I think it's, I don't think we need to spend six million dollars on a swimming pool, and I don't think we need to give a developer who's already a millionaire a ten million dollar tax break to build another apartment building in Lansing downtown when we're flooded with them to begin with. That money can be better spent coming back into our tax base by paying the taxes that is owed and helping the community grow from the bottom up. We have a lot of work to do. The Let's Warming Center, I know I only have a few seconds left here, but I'm active in this recovery community. I know Mayor Shore's spoken at Families Against Narcotics. He believes in that. A lot of these people are turned away from other shelters because they're either on substance, some sort of substance, or they're drunk. And they get turned away from the shelters, and they need a place to go. Sorry. We need to get some cots in that place and maybe do a little better on making sure people get off the streets when it's cold. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Norma Bauer, followed by Dakota Cranville.
Okay, so I'm Norma Bauer, and I wonder if the city budget that we talked about so much at the Committee of the Whole meeting includes the potential liability of various lawsuits that the city is involved in. For example, appealing a case where a jury decision awarded five million dollars to a plaintiff because of racial discrimination. That's a lot of money. So five million dollars over however long it takes to get the appeal scheduled, that's a lot of interest that the city gained by keeping the five million dollars, right? Yeah, okay, I suppose maybe the errors and emissions policy would have paid a lot of it. But anyway, I wonder why there was an appeal on such a blatant case of racial discrimination. It seems to me that it might be a delaying tactic to keep that five million dollars or, or whatever. But it also comes with a risk that the premium on the errors and emissions policy is going to go up because they don't like to pay out. You know, generally, insurance policies like to collect premiums. They don't really like to pay out, as I am finding in my private life. So when a qualified member of the fire department is a first responder EMT who's fully qualified, is a person of color, and he was fired, you know, that's not right, that's not good. I'm pretty sure the judge will find that true. So do we really want the errors and emissions policy premium to go up because of our error and doing our, our city's error? It's, it's really not good. I, I say, for shame that the city is handling it this way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dakota Cranville, followed by Nina Blum.
My name is Dakota Cranville. I'm a longtime resident of mid-Michigan and a current resident of Lansing. I've come here tonight to urge the City Council of Lansing to share in my support of the community-drafted ceasefire resolution that was presented to council on January eighth. It is my belief that the city of Lansing, as our state capital, has an obligation in part to lead our state and our local community in setting an example of moral judgment and to signal other offices, both higher and lower, both state and federal, and what we as a community alongside other municipalities in our state assert is right in conjunction with the unalienable ideal that the sanctity of life be held in the highest regard, that the death of innocents and the orchestrated large-scale murder of civilians is unacceptable and not aligned with our values as people claiming to be in touch with humanity. I've come here tonight to assert that this community-drafted ceasefire resolution is the least our city can do to take part in a vital conversation that is happening globally, a conversation that is long overdue, in my opinion, but of more immediate note, a conversation that is already happening across other municipalities and organizations in our state without us. Already, Ann Arbor, Canton, Dearborn, Hamtramck, Kalamazoo, Wayne County, Ypsilanti, the Ann Arbor Public School District, the Michigan branch of APIA Boat, Michigan United, the Michigan branch of NASW, the President of State Board of Education, and the Wade State Executive Board have all called for an end of the senseless death being aided and abetted by our federal government. Furthermore, more municipalities are in the process of coming to the table with their own resolutions in favor of actions being taken to put an end to this genocide. Notably, the city of Sterling Heights, whose mayor, Michael Taylor, has recently been quoted as saying, "I strongly believe that cities can lead and cities should lead. We are not getting leadership from Lansing and from Washington. If not us, then who?" I'd like to end on some facts and figures. According to Euromed Monitor, as of January sixth, seventy percent of civilian infrastructure in Gaza has been destroyed. This includes agricultural land, housing, sites of cultural importance, which includes the excavation and removal of remains from mass burial sites, along with the destruction of healthcare facilities and other vital infrastructure, while about four percent of Gaza's total population, which amounts to more than ninety thousand people, are now dead, wounded, or missing. One point nine million people have been displaced locally to an area the size of a fifth of Metro Detroit. These people are also under bombardment and face famine and disease that threatens an additional higher death toll than what so far has been inflicted militarily, according to the WHO. With the healthcare infrastructure that is now nearly completely inaccessible or entirely crippled since the fall of the last functioning hospital, Nasser Medical Complex in Hanay Unit just a few days ago, I'd like to urge everyone here today to use whatever we have at our disposal to contextualize this unfathomable level of human suffering and execution. If that humanization is too difficult, I'd like everyone here today, as we do live in a post-COVID-19 America, to realize that whenever there is a serious health or humanitarian crisis anywhere in the world, it means another added stressor on global relief aid. The destruction is wide-reaching, and the pain will be lasting. As members of the global community in the most powerful country in the world, a country with the most outside influence in this offensive, our voices are long overdue. Thank you for your time, counsel.
Thank you. Next is Nina Blum, followed by Amanda Castillo.
Hi, my name is Nina, and I'm simply here to tell you why you should support a ceasefire in Gaza. I support permanent ceasefire in Gaza because the Palestinian people need a permanent end to the constant violence and genocide they have to endure in the last a hundred-plus days. Palestinians need immediate access to food, water, and medical supplies that have been extremely difficult, if not impossible, to acquire. This is due to the continued bombardment and the decision made by Israel to only accept a few trucks carrying supplies out of many trucks that are waiting to come into Gaza from Egypt and are waiting at the border. As of January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, a total of thirty-one thousand four hundred and ninety-seven Palestinians in the Gaza Strip have been killed, including a hundred and thirteen journalists, according to Euromed Human Rights Monitor and the Palestinian Health Ministry. The Euromed Monitor also reports that approximately eighty-five percent of the population in the Strip has been displaced from their homes, and around seventy thousand housing units have been destroyed. Hospitals, churches, mosques, schools, and universities have been bombed and destroyed. Palestinians deserve our support to get out of this hell. The community-supported resolution that's been brought forward is supported by me and should be supported by you too, because it calls for the right thing to do. Ending humanitarian crisis has already been happening for far too long. Supporting a permanent ceasefire in Gaza is simply the moral and just thing for Lansing's government to do, and several cities across the United States have already joined in support of a permanent ceasefire, including Oakland, California, Atlanta, Georgia, and several Michigan cities, including Detroit, Dearborn, and Hamtramck. If the Lansing City Council declared its support for a ceasefire, it would signal to other cities and states who haven't declared support yet that a ceasefire is the right thing to happen and something that they should support as well. Thank you, and free Palestine. That's the end.
Thank you. Next, we have Amanda Castillo, followed by Kyle Richard.
I'm here to voice my support for the community-drafted ceasefire resolution. It feels kind of inhuman to have to even state why I support this resolution. To put it simply, because I still have my humanity intact. My empathy for my fellow humans has not been destroyed by the rugged individualism pushed by the capitalist mindset, because I don't have to debate that genocide is wrong. For a hundred and eight days, Palestinians have been massacred and displaced, and for over seventy-five years, the Nakba continues. As an indigenous person from Turtle Island, the forced displacement, theft of culture, and mass murder of the Palestinian people is only all too familiar. Please do not allow Lansing to be complicit in this devastating repetition of colonial violence. This seemingly small action may seem pointless to some, but does not, does a single drop of water not create a ripple? The influence you have as political figures in this beautiful city can truly affect incredible change. By joining Detroit, Ann Arbor, Dearborn, and many other Michigan cities to demand a permanent ceasefire, you can be a part of the true change and be on the right side of history. Ceasefire now, end the occupation, and free Palestine.
Thank you. Next is Kyle Richard, followed by Nick Finch.
Good evening, Kyle Richard, fourth ward, speaking here tonight in favor of a ceasefire resolution. This morning, you all received a sampling of language approved by other cities, language drafted by Lansing residents, and a copy of the South African Brief, which details Israel's genocidal acts against the Palestinian people. As of now, President Joe Biden violated the Constitution multiple times, circumventing Congress, sending additional weapons to Israel, and bombing the people of Yemen, further escalating this conflict. As a historical note, the United States has funded the murder of black and brown children around the world since its inception. What you do with this information in this moment is up to you. What you do matters. Is it this time that I announce my retirement from this body? I first attended council on Zoom, and I spoke regularly- I first attended council on Zoom, and I spoke regularly for nearly two years before returning to call for a ceasefire. In my time at this podium, I spoke on many things. If I were to boil it down to a single word, it would be access. Who is allowed to have? One of my earliest motivations coming to council came from my time as a teacher. Go J-Dubs. How was I to teach students to participate in a democratic process if I have not participated for myself? How was I to teach students this democracy is worth participating in if I have not participated for myself? I left the classroom five years ago now, and I'd say I've participated. I've seen this body move, and yet I ask, does this body value human life? Does this body take its role and responsibility seriously? I can recognize the ways I have shown up in this space, as well as others. And perhaps Kyle is just another angry white man. Or perhaps Kyle is scared. Perhaps Kyle is defending something. I believe Lansing is a city of love and a working-class town. Passing a ceasefire resolution is not a radical act. It is a human solution to a human problem, and is the least this body is capable of. I have given you all that I can. What you do matters. Ceasefire now, free Palestine within our lifetime. Ceasefire now. Thank you.
Next, we have Nick Finch, followed by Hannah Irwin.
Good evening. My name is Nick Finch. I live in Ward 1, and I am also here to support the ceasefire resolution regarding Palestine. When I first got plugged into Lansing in 2009, I was so young, and the draw to Lansing was this refugee resettlement, working-class city where we are all having solidarity together and trying to build a place where everyone can thrive. And I've remained either working or somehow plugged into lots of different immigrant and refugee groups since that time. And every time there's a new crisis somewhere in the world or a new war, we know that we're going to see some of those people in Lansing, right? We think about how are we going to address these traumas, these losses, once they reach our community? And with what's going on right now in Gaza, it's not that, because nobody's making it out, right? We don't expect to see an influx of Palestinians in Lansing in the same way that we have from Afghanistan and from Congo and from some other places where there's a lot of unrest, because this is a genocide, right? It's been just over 100 days and over 25,000 people killed. Over 16,000 of them are women and children. This is not a war. This is a genocide, right? And as Lansing, we have a stake in that. We are part of the global community. We have family. We have loved ones from all over the world. And we are a center of governmental power. This is how democracy works. So for those who say, "We're the City Council. A ceasefire resolution from us is meaningless," I cannot disagree more, because this is how government works, right? We go through these municipalities that go up to states, that go up to federal government, and the amount of money that the US is sending to fund this genocide is, what, 3.8 billion annually? And we stand by and watch that happen. We have to put an end to it. We have to care about the humanity, our global humanity, and our local humanity. When we think of folks shivering in the lets, trying to sleep on metal chairs and getting harassed out of the bathrooms at night, that matters, right? That's part of humanity. When we see children being bombed and hospitals, places of food and water, and the camps where people are told that they can go for safety, being bombed, that matters. All of this is interconnected, and we need to move. This is your role, and this is why we're here.
Next, we have Hannah Irwin, followed by Charles Tidwell.
Hello. Today marks 109 days that Gaza has been under siege. It's baffling to me that I am here asking elected officials to do what their electors are requesting, which is to put forth a resolution calling for a permanent and sustainable ceasefire, as well as the end of government funding to Israel. The community has drafted a resolution, so this is not a difficult task. Several cities in Michigan have passed a similar resolution. Ann Arbor School District has even called for one. So with that said, I'm here today to bear witness for the Palestinians in Gaza and those under occupation by Israel. I'm here to call it what it is, which is genocide. It is verifiable genocide. On Instagram, I saw a man and his child, who could not have been more than two, shot and bleeding to death in the street after being promised safe passage. This father used his last breath to reach out and offer comfort to his baby. I do not turn away from the images coming out of Gaza. I seek them out. I do so because my government is complicit. I do so because I want to know what I am paying for. I do so because if I can do nothing else, I can bear witness to their suffering, I can tell their stories, I can tell you that they have lived. There have been babies born in Gaza since October 7th who have already died, newborns who have only ever known the stench of death, the taste of starvation, and the sounds of bombs and screaming. I have seen mothers weeping for never getting to experience happiness with them. I have seen fathers come back home from trying to find food for their families, only to find their wife and children have been killed in an airstrike. I have seen a grandmother shot down while holding a child's hand. In the child's other hand was a white flag. Last week, I saw a boy no older than 13 gathering pieces of flesh off of the ground after an airstrike, like he knew what to do, like he had done it before, like he knew that they leave no one behind, not even if it is just pieces. I am here to ask you to adopt and pass the community drafted resolution for an immediate and sustainable ceasefire. I am here to call for Palestinian liberation. Michigan has a large Arab and Muslim population. We have already failed them. Let us not continue to tell them that we do not see them as equals. We have entered into the year 2024, and this type of warfare has no place in a civilized society. It hasn't for a long time. This is not about picking sides. This is barbaric. Those are our children suffocating in another rubble. Those are our men digging them out with their bare hands. Those are our mothers giving birth on bloody hospital floors. Those are our daughters getting their limbs amputated on a kitchen table with no anesthetic. Those are our sons being stripped and humiliated. And finally, I'm here to ask you what type of person, what type of human beings deserve this treatment? Because if any of us do, that means all of us do.
Thank you. Next is Charles Tidwell, followed by Vivian Breslin.
My name is Charles Tidwell. I live in Rio Town. At the last City Council meeting, I witnessed something that really bothered me. You know, the Dr. Martin Luther King Commission gave a presentation, and afterward, the crowd was given the opportunity to applaud, encouraged even by this council. And that's obviously the right move. You know, we need to honor MLK. He stood against genocide and oppression. I can't imagine the kind of person who wouldn't support what he stood for. But, you know, in 1966, only 32% of the US supported him. They viewed him positively. 66% of the US viewed him negatively. So he was kind of divided back then. But later, during public commentary, when we had members of this community speak out against genocide and oppression, and when members of the public applauded, they were silenced, banged down by a gavel. I looked it up. This council's decorum rules, they're vague, they're left at the discretion of the council president, and the only real prohibition is meeting disruption. I really fail to see how the community showing its support while someone departs this podium and another person arrives to it is disruptive. It certainly is not offensive or a breach of decorum for the public to show support to one another. So I have a lot of thoughts about why someone might be motivated to shut down that support, but I think expressing them is probably counterproductive to public discourse. So I want to conclude with this. Inequitably applying the rules is grossly offensive. It is, it's really inappropriate. I'd like to encourage every member of this council to consider its decorum rules and consider how it's cutting out public involvement by silencing us. You all know what the citizens of this city want, and if your conscience is ill-equipped to provide guidance, then you need to listen to your constituents. The ones who are speaking, not the ones who are silent, not the ones who may represent vague things, notions that they won't speak about because they know they're unacceptable. You need to do what is right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last time I'm gonna, excuse me, last time I'm gonna say this, you guys. And it's not about silencing anybody, and I'm not trying to set precedent of going back and forth, okay? Everybody has their opinion, and I want to make sure everybody has the same respect when they come up to this podium.
We have Vivian Breslin, followed by David Ellis.
Greetings. My name is Vivian Breslin, and I am here to call you to act, to pass a resolution to call a ceasefire in Palestine. I grew up reading a lot of the history and wondering how people could let atrocities happen all across the board. But since I've been alive, we've been continually living it, and I've seen it. And you might be wondering, what can City Council in Lansing do? And the thing that you can do is, we have already known, and we've seen this continuously, that by being complacent to a corrupt and powerful system, you are perpetuating it. It is, the 61% of people in a recent poll have been shown that they want a ceasefire. We are nearing a supermajority of the public. The US continues to not only not listen to the people's wishes, but funding the genocide that we are trying to stop. I ask that you join the voices of dissent and act as a person that wants to help people and protect lives. You have a chance right now to stand on the correct side of history and play a part in something greater than yourselves. I am doing my part now, as are everyone else that's speaking here tonight. Now, I ask all of you to fulfill your role and join the voice of dissent and call for an end to the genocide of the Palestinian people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have David Ellis, followed by Greta Cruz.
Hi. Oh, my timer's not set. No, I don't care. Hi, David Ellis, downtown resident. So the other day, I decided to take a walk to the grocery store to pick up, I think it was just some bread and a couple other things. I left my apartment, and down at the corner of my street, I had to wait for the crosswalk. The crosswalk said, "Go," and so I entered the intersection. I looked to my right and saw a Pontiac coming flying up on my side. I jumped backwards and landed on my back with it cruising on by without stopping. Now, some of you might be saying, "Oh, that sucks. I'm sorry that happened to you. Bad drivers are always terrible." This is not the first time I've come before City Council and said that, no. Time and time again, cities and countries even, entire countries, Departments of Transportation, everyone has been posting studies after studies showing, no, there is no such thing as just a random bad driver. It is bad design that causes dangerous intersections like this. Right now, pedestrian deaths in the United States are at a 40-year high. They have not been this high since 1981. Nine years ago, at this exact crosswalk where I was almost hit, a pedestrian was hit and killed 200 feet from my apartment by a car turning right. And the really funny thing about this for me is, right outside at the corner of Michigan and Capitol Avenue, there's something called a leading pedestrian interval. This is a basic piece of traffic engineering. What it is, is the timer waits about five seconds to allow pedestrians to enter the intersection. The New York City Department of Transportation has shown a 34% decrease in fatalities on intersections where this has been implemented. How much does it cost to implement this? Sending an engineer out to adjust the timing by about five seconds on that intersection. There are cities in Michigan already employing this across their entire city. We are seeing massive pedestrian investments in Jackson, Kalamazoo, Detroit, Grand Rapids, Ann Arbor, everywhere but Lansing. We are the only ones who are being left behind in the city of, in the state of Michigan. This is before we even look at other states. So I'm coming here to ask, once again, could we please look into reforming the way we handle safety in the city? This is something that disproportionately affects the young, the old, and minorities, and people below the poverty line, which I am actually now. So I am now in the group that is most likely to be affected by this. To wrap up, I actually have a weird invitation. I would love if any of you would be willing to sit down and talk with me a little bit more about this, so I can tell you about some of my experiences. I logged over 2,000 miles on foot last year in the city, so I have more than enough experience to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Greta Cruz, followed by Emily Wachowski.
Hi, my name is Greta Cruz. I'm a member of the First Ward, and I'm also here to speak in support of the ceasefire resolution that's been drafted by the community. I think my fellow constituents have done a really good job of outlining the problems that are going on right now, so I don't think I need to beat a dead horse with those comments. But I do think it's important to reemphasize why this is a local issue. As my fellow constituent Nick mentioned earlier, Lansing is a large, large community for refugee resettlement, and it's really, really important to think about what it means that this would be a local issue if Palestinians were here to be speaking at this meeting, but they've been held in an open-air prison, so they're not able to be because they haven't been able to leave. I think to deny that we're global citizens, whether you think of yourself as that or not, is disingenuous, considering we live in a country that has $50 billion of bilateral trade per year with the state of Israel. Whether or not you realize it, you are directly affected by our global relationship with the state. With any other issue, whether it be climate change, racial justice, or anything else, we talk about cities being the first place where constituents can come together and speak with their local communities. So I just simply don't see how this doesn't fall in line with those other issues, as well as the fact that I also work in the Lansing Public School District, and I know students there who are being actively affected by this crisis, who it would matter to, to hear from their community that they are not supportive of. In fact, they're against the violence that people that they even know are experiencing. It shouldn't be, it shouldn't need to be extremely local in terms of having someone next door to be able to be a pertinent issue, but I do think it's important to comment on the fact that even recently, there was an MSU fellow that was murdered in Gaza, right next door to us. In the Detroit area, there's a doctor who's lost at least 20 of his family members. I'm not sure how much more the violence needs to spread and affect our communities for this to become a local issue, but it already is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Emily Wachowski, followed by August.
I'm glad to hear that the ceasefire resolution will be going on the agenda for the Diversity and Inclusion Meeting Wednesday, but according to Councilmember Garza, there are still some people here who aren't on the same side in terms of ending this genocide. So I will share some information with you that will hopefully shed some light on the situation and make you on the right side of history here, bud. It's the most publicized genocide in the history of humankind. Photos and videos are widely shared in real time. There's simply no way to deny what's happening when there is more and more irrefutable evidence coming out every single solitary day. Every day, at least 10 children have limbs amputated without anesthetic in Gaza. It's been 14 days since we've last seen each other here. That means at least 140 children in Gaza have lost one or more limbs and had them amputated without anesthetic. I want you to go home and watch one of the videos that I've seen of these children undergoing amputation without anesthetic. I want you to hear the agonizing, blood-curdling screams of a child being operated on while fully conscious. When you're considering whether or not to support and pass this resolution, I urge you to imagine the sound coming from your own child, coming from your nieces and nephews, and I want you to ask yourself what you would hope others would do around the world to help stop that suffering. According to the Mayo Clinic, about 10% to 20% of pregnancies typically end in miscarriage. Care International is reporting... That means that 30 to 60% of pregnancies in Gaza will not come full-term. The roughly 40% of pregnant parents who are fortunate enough to welcome their child into this world will raise that newborn in a tent while they are starving without access to proper medical care, because Israel has intentionally made it that way. They continue to deny entry to trucks filled with all the necessities of life that Israel has cut off from Gaza to ensure that if people there aren't bombed to death, they succumb to hunger or illness. It is extermination. It is ethnic cleansing. It is war crimes that your government is committing while you are representatives of that government. You should be ashamed. Do you want it to be recorded for posterity, that you wanted the genocide to end? Or do you wanna be remembered for your silence? I urge you to pass this resolution. It is such an easy thing to do. It should be an easy decision. Do you expect your constituents to trust you to serve your community if you won't even lift a finger to let it be known that you stand against the genocide? Our state is home to the city with the largest Muslim population per capita in the city of Dearborn. What message are you as a representative of the capital city of that state sending to them by sitting silently as their family members are killed? I will remind you again that you will never be able to fight your oppressor without beating them with equal or greater force.
Next is August, followed by Amber Rose Nolan.
Hello. I'm speaking today to ask you to adopt the community drafted ceasefire resolution. I support a permanent ceasefire in Gaza and the community drafted resolution and the, uh, to put an end to the humanitarian crisis and the many war crimes that have been committed against Palestinians by the Israeli state during the last 109 days. Bombing hospitals, bulldozing cemeteries, and targeting journalists, to name a few. According to a report from the Palestinian Ministry of Health yesterday, at least 25,000 people have been killed in Gaza and more than 8,000 people are missing, believed to be buried under the rubble. None of us are free unless all of us are free. With the genocide happening in Gaza, anti-Islamic and antisemitic sentiment both have risen across the country. Adopting this resolution sends a message that Lansing does not stand for genocide, doesn't stand for hate, and doesn't stand for bigotry and intolerance. Lansing City Council is the right venue for this resolution because you are the closest public servants to your constituents. We've been calling Senators Gary Peters and Debbie Stabenow and Representative Alyssa Stotkin, and they aren't listening. Maybe they'll listen if we pass this resolution as a city instead of thousands of separate voices. Let's join other cities across Michigan and demand a ceasefire in Gaza. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Amber Rose Nolan, followed by W. Walker.
Well, hello all. Amber Rose here. I am a Fourth Ward person. Um, as said before, there's a lot of things that I was going to say that has already been repeated, so I apologize for that. I wanted to give some clarifying points for some of the other things that I heard in here. Uh, when Vivian was speaking, about the 61% of, um, the majority of Americans that support a ceasefire, that is from the Data for Progress, if you want to look up that statistic. Another portion of that study is that it is across political lines, across political parties, across ages, and that 11% of lawmakers are not supporting a call for a ceasefire. So just some more information there. I heard that you had information from the ICG case. There is more information about cases inside of the ICC as well. And I know that people had talked about before, looking at different videos and those kind of things. There have been a lot of people calling to look at the press, who are currently there to give you as much accurate information as possible. With that being said, myself, the people in the room with me, and hundreds of constituents online petitioning for this resolution have one thing in common. We want our representatives, for, excuse me, representatives to represent us. We have spent months attempting to have our voices heard nationally, statewide, and now we are calling on you. The silence we've heard is complicit to our fears, and it allows for hate and fear to escalate inside of our city. I had previously spoken on the National Institute of Mental Health Study on the crisis youth was facing and the direct correlation of our political climate and war. Previously, I had spoke of my past and my family and of my uncle I never met because of state-sanctioned policies. Presently, in that same family, I have members at elementary school. There's seven, and I don't know what he is currently facing, but I don't think that it's anything good. So I'm here at a council level, hoping that you will listen to your constituents' need for a ceasefire. We have spent months, again, trying to be heard, and now we're here, hoping that you will listen. We are, we are feeling the rise in fear, the disillusionment, and the hate that escalates every day that a ceasefire is not called. The people in Lansing deserve to live in peace, and we deserve to be heard, respected, and listened to. We are calling on this council to represent that mission and to call for a permanent, sustainable ceasefire. And as people had said before, if it is something where we cannot convince you, please listen to other council members who have passed these kind of resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have W. Walker, followed by Max Voorhees.
I've been here many times. I spoke many words, but for some reason, it seems, no one hears me. There's an old saying, "A picture's worth a thousand words." I have a slide presentation. It consists of about 50 pictures. That'd be 50,000 words, which I can't get in, in three minutes. But there's no way for, for this to become part of this council meeting. Slide presentations are part of freedom of speech. We see it on television. We see it everywhere. We see it in commercials, freedom of speech. There must be a way to allow slide presentations and other forms of communication in this new millennium. We're speaking of, people here are speaking of what's happening all over the world, other countries, but yet and still, what's happening in this city? We got people who will be freezing to death, maybe towards the end of the month, and definitely in February. We have the warming centers, which members on the council know is totally inadequate. We need to start looking at what we're doing to our people, then be more concerned about the issues abroad. I know many that don't appreciate what I'm saying, but we have people who have served in our militaries, came back, got a violation, got a felony, or even a misdemeanor, and now can't get a place to live. We have people who are mentally, mentally ill, sleeping under bridges. I have seen things I do not wanna see, have any memory of. I have taken pictures that I will not show you, point blank and simple. It's time that we start getting serious about the homelessness in this capital city. It's time that we start getting serious about serious inequities. We have individuals that still have brains, but can't use them, and can't be productive, sleeping in the woods and under bridges. But then, you guys kick them out from under the bridges. Send the police to clean them out, throw all their worldly goods away, without them having anything left. What reason do they need to stay in your society? Good day.
Next is Max Voorhees, followed by Victoria Baker.
Hi, my name's, uh, Max Voorhees. I've been a resident of Southside Lansing for about five years now, and I'm just, uh, I don't really have much to say that I don't think my constituents have already said about the ceasefire, and, uh, I think we need to, uh, have more funding for unhoused, uh, and I'll yield my time.
Thank you. Next is Victoria Baker.
My name's Victoria Baker. I, uh, I'm a therapist for children who experience severe forms of PTSD. Um, so every day, I'm pretty used to talking to kids about the impact of like, watching their parent die in front of them, or starving, or, you know, a variety of things that cause trauma. Um, and those are just the kids in my caseload. When I think of the kids in Gaza that have PTSD, which is likely probably all of them at this point, I'm just horrified. It's terrible what's been allowed to happen to them just because Israel gives a lot of money to America. Um, the evil that's allowed to happen because of oil or politics, all that stuff, it's ridiculous. Um, I know some people think it's not our place to say anything about it, um, but if we stay, if we say nothing in the face of genocide, I think that's supporting genocide. You know, I'm already so ashamed of our country, I would hate to also be ashamed of Lansing. I love Lansing. I grew up in Lansing, my whole family grew up in Lansing. Um, I really do think it is our place to say something. We're the capital city, and we can't stand for this. Thank you. Oh, also, um, there should be, it should be warm in warming centers, too.
Thank you. That was our final speaker for this evening.
Thank you. See you no further business. We are adjourned.